Good evening. The hour being seven thirty, we have a quorum. My name is Jim Braden, Town Moderator. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance and the singing of our national anthem by the middle school choir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. That was wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you, ladies. Thank you. You sounded great. Thank you. Please be seated. Few introductions. Liz Gaffney, our town clerk, to my right, your left. Does the clerk attest to the return of the warrant? Yes, she does. On stage, Mark Rice, our town council, Jim Johnson, town administrator, Ben Barrett, chairman of the Board of Selectmen, and Doug Shaw, vice chair of the Finance Committee. Dennis Crowley, I think, is on his way. Okay. We want to introduce our newest RTM member who won in tonight's precinct three caucus, Christine Crowley. Cochran, Cochran, sorry. Christine Cochran. She's right over there. I know Christine, too. Welcome, Christine. As you know, she used to work for the Walpole Times for many, many years. We have a few new department heads I'd like to introduce. Human Resource Director Sarah Burden is here. I don't know if she's... Welcome, Sarah. We have our new Recreation Director Lauren Gordon. Lauren here, please. And also the Deputy Assessor Joseph Roach is here as well. So welcome, Joseph. Walpole Media is providing live coverage on Channel twenty-two on Comcast and Verizon, Channel thirty, also on the YouTube streaming. We have a few resolutions this evening. I'd ask you to stand, please, for the first resolution. It is resolved that we, the representative of Town Meeting members, inscribe upon the record of the Fall Annual Town Meeting of October twentieth, two thousand twenty-five, our recognition and sincere appreciation of the contributions rendered by the late Robert A. Bloom, who passed away on August eighth, two thousand twenty-five, as a representative of Town Meeting member in two thousand three from Precinct Five. And further, in acknowledgement of the town's loss, we request the moderator observe a moment of silence in Robert's memory. Thank you. Please remain standing. It is further resolved that the town clerk be instructed to send a copy of this resolution to Robert's family. Second resolution this evening is resolved that the Town Meeting members inscribe upon the records of the Fall Annual Town Meeting of October twentieth, two thousand twenty-five, our recognition and sincere appreciation of the contributions rendered by the late Thomas C. McCarthy, who passed away in September ninth, two thousand twenty-five, as a representative of Town Meeting member in Precinct One from nineteen ninety... nineteen eighty-eight to nineteen ninety-two. And further, in acknowledgement of the town's loss, we request the moderator observe a moment of silence in Thomas's memory. Thank you. And further, the town be instructed to send a copy of this resolution to Thomas's family. Thank you. Please be seated. There is a third resolution being offered by Representative Town Meeting member Phil Shakarowski. Mr. Shakarowski. Copy of this was available at the table when you were entering the hall this evening.
Philip Shakarowski, Precinct Seven. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I have a resolution to see if the town will vote to adopt the following resolution. Whereas, according to the Massachusetts Federal Impact Dashboard, federal budget cuts have resulted in a three-point-seven billion-dollar loss of funding from the Massachusetts state budget this year alone. And whereas, Massachusetts Governor Laura Healey has stated that funding cuts are making life more expensive for Massachusetts residents, undermining public safety, taking away health care, and hurting our businesses. And whereas, Governor Laura Healey has stated that there is no way that any state can make up for the billions of dollars that they are cutting from our budgets. And whereas, these federal budget cuts are affecting services and aid rendered to our state and town, including homeland security, disaster prevention aid, school mental health services, tutoring, school security and building upgrades, healthy food for babies and students, respiratory illness prevention and treatment, community health centers, public health workers, substance use disorder treatment, increased broadband access, and more. And whereas, some Walpole residents depend on these services and aid and are directly affected by the cuts. For example, one in four Massachusetts households rely on SNAP, and twenty-eight percent of Massachusetts residents are enrolled in health... Mass... health. Therefore, be it resolved that Walpole Town Meeting urge President Trump and the United States House of Representatives to restore these funds. And be it further resolved that Walpole Town Meeting urge U.S. Senator Markey, U.S. Senator Warren, and U.S. Representative Lynch to advocate for restoring these funds. And be it further resolved that the town clerk be directed to send a copy of this resolution to President Trump and U.S. Senator Markey, U.S. Senator Warren, and U.S. Representative Lynch. And in the handout, you will have seen there are two links. All of the statistics came from the first link, which is the Massachusetts Funding Dashboard. And the second link is to where all the quotes from Laura Healey is. And I just want to urge, as representatives of people in Walpole, I urge you to vote yes on this resolution. We need to let our leaders in Washington know that making cuts to essential services are unacceptable and that these funds should be restored.
Thank you, Mr. Shakarowski. This is a resolution. It's non-binding. It was offered by a Town Meeting member. My practice has always been to put it to a vote. This would be a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? It is a vote. Thank you. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for staffing the door, the custodial staff for doing a wonderful job, as well as our tech guru, Mike Donovan, and Jim Connolly, Andrew Levinson, the very hard-working people in the town of Walpole, particularly Liz Gaffney, and Assistant Town Administrator Patrick Shield, who does an excellent job in pulling this all together. If you are new to Town Meeting, Town Meeting members are to sit... and Town Committee members are to sit this side of the aisle, back there. All others are to sit in the rear of the hall. If you decide you'd like to make a comment, please queue up in front of one of the microphones down below. You'll be recognized to speak. Please identify yourself by name and precinct. Please address your remarks to the moderator. If you're asking a question, the moderator will then direct your questions to the appropriate individual. As become... has become practice, members who wish to speak on an article will be limited to three minutes. This is something that my predecessors have put in place. I don't adhere to that on a strict basis, so I don't think three minutes is enough time to get your point across often, so we'll do it in a liberal fashion, but yet in a reasonable fashion. If you have new information to offer, please offer it. If it's the same information that's already been heard, you will be directed to return to your seat by me. Voice voting would be the primary method of voting. You can make a motion to move the question. You do not need to be queued up to do that. You can do that from your seat. And unlike a point of order, you can also... you don't need to be recognized. Point of order, you don't have to be recognized in any time. You can raise a point of order. The tellers this evening are on the left, my left, your right, Ryan Augusta and Jen Hughley. In the center, Mark Trudeau and Judy Conroy. And on the right, Jomian Mulligan and Erica Burden. If there's a standing vote, I will first ask the tellers to vote by show of their hands, and then they will take the vote while you stand. Once again, it is a pleasure for me to be the Town Moderator. And if you wish to make a substitute motion, please let me know in advance, and I'll be happy to do that. I do have one substitute motion on Article Seven, which I will apprise you of when we get to that article. As you know, the moderator has two functions, to run a fair meeting and to appoint various people to the FinCom as well as the capital budget. There's been two new appointees to the FinCom. Michael Nadeau, who is not with us this evening. I know his children are home. He's homesick with kids. You might recognize the name. This is Tom and Ellen's son. Tom Nadeau was chairman of the Finance Committee for many years, years ago, and Ellen was very involved in town politics. Michael was a real estate expert. And the other person I appointed was Richard Kofinki. Dick is from East Walpole. You might know the Kofinki family. He's a West Point graduate. He's coaching at the high school with football and is very active in some community volunteer work. Town Meeting, as you know, is one of the few places we confront democracy outside the civics textbook, and if Town Meeting is an acronism, then so is democracy. So fortunately for us, Town Meeting is alive and well in Walpole. I would ask if you're going to use facts and figures, that the source of these facts and figures be made known or referenced, and be made available to the members of the Town Meeting Board... Body. We have a dignitary with us this evening. Congressman Steve Lynch is here, and he'd like to address the bodies. Congressman Lynch.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Great to see you all. Thank you for participating in Town Meeting. It really is... This is where democracy lives. So grateful for the kindness and courtesy of Jim and allowing me to offer some brief remarks. As you may know, there is a government shutdown in effect right now. I also understand that there are very important matters before Town Meeting, so I'm going to be very brief. I've been through a number of these shutdowns during my career in Congress, and normally, what would be happening right now is I would be in Congress on the House, and we would be working around the clock frantically to try to reopen the government. My Republican colleagues and I, we know the best Chinese restaurants, and we order food in, and we work around the clock. And we argue constantly for hours. And... But at the end of it, we solve those problems. In the past, we've been able to reopen the government to most people's satisfaction. What worries me is that's not happening today. That's not happening over the last three weeks. We just have not been able to sit down and work out those differences. So what I worry is that this may turn into a longer government shutdown at the federal level than we have ever had in the past because of the lack of, you know, sit down and talking to each other face-to-face and trying to work out some of these differences. And I was told by Cliff Snuffer years ago to stay non-political when you're speaking at Town Meeting, and I'm going to observe that advice tonight. I'm sure you could blame both sides for the shutdown if you thought long enough about it. But the problem is that it's continuing, and we're not getting a full investment in terms of trying to find that solution. So for me, my thinking, I'm responsible for representing everyone, Republicans, Democrats, unenrolled, everyone in the town of Walpole. And what I'm fearful of, and this is... This is especially for towns like Walpole and Norwood. You know, no matter where you get your health care, if you're living in Walpole, whether you go to the Mass General or Beth... Beth Israel Deaconess or Brockton Hospital or Good Sam or South Shore Hospital, all of those hospitals, all of our hospitals, rely on thirty to forty percent of their funding from Medicaid. And that's for your family's, you know, benefit as well as mine. And the problem is that because of the bankruptcy of Stuart Health Care that crashed a half dozen hospitals in our region, Carney Hospital in my area of Dorchester, Norwood is closed right now, but we're working on that. We've got long waiting lines. If you go to your emergency room at any of those hospitals, you'll see people lined up in the corridor outside. They call it boarding, because while that person should be admitted, there's no bed available. So they keep them on carts, and they have... They have now a position called a boarding nurse. So those are nurses that take care of people before they're admitted to the hospital. So this deal that's on the table in Washington, D.C., will... If it goes through, will cause, I'm afraid, several of those hospitals to close their doors. And where will we be? So I'm looking for a solution with my Republican colleagues to try to figure out a way forward so that we don't have that, so that we're able to take care of the families of Walpole and the rest of my district. So that's where I am, and that's the problem that we face. Now, especially because of that Stuart Health Care bankruptcy, we're a little bit more vulnerable than some other areas. But for those of you who rely on federal assistance, this is where we stand right now. Recipients of Social Security will continue to receive their checks, and if you're on Medicare, Medicaid, or receive disability through Social Security benefits, you'll continue to receive your benefits through the remainder of this year. However, there have been furloughs and layoffs, and many Social Security offices are shorthanded, short-staffed. So there have been significant delays through my office. They... You know, we get calls all the time of people who have Social Security claims, and they're not being addressed. All their eligibility claims are not being processed. So my office can help with that, just so you know. We can expedite things, and we can sort of light a fire under them. My Brockton number, my Brockton office is five oh eight, five eight six, five 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 five, and my Boston office is six one seven, four two eight, two thousand. So we can help. For our veterans, you know, we're blessed with three great VA hospitals in our district, Brockton, West Roxbury, and Jamaica Plain. And while there have been... There have been about twelve thousand layoffs at the VA since January. Our facilities are still operational. They're not at full staff. Again, there are delays. There's a backlog of cases, but they're operational right now and will continue to process veterans' benefits. Any veteran that has a problem in Walpole, my office and also your veteran service officer are more than eager to help. Also, but there are delays there as well, so just be mindful of that if you're caring for an elderly veteran. Military and federal retirees will continue to receive their retirement benefits as well. The passport office is shorthanded right now. There have been furloughs and layoffs. So if you're anticipating, you know, any travel, things like that, think ahead. We're already seeing some delays already. And also the passport office, it's really, really slow. So if you've got something coming up where you're going to need a passport soon, you probably need to call right away. And again, my office can help with that. Air travel in general. Right now, the TSA workers at the airport, these are the screeners, it's ninety percent of the TSA is these screeners. They're not being paid, and I'm not sure. Now it's been three weeks that they haven't been paid. So I'm worried that... They're not being paid a lot of money anyway, so I'm worried that they're just going to stop showing up for work, so that'll create problems. Air traffic controllers. Last week, I have thirteen thousand air traffic controllers nationally. They received partial checks last week. They were short two days' pay, and next week, they will get zero. So I worry about that. The job's stressful enough as it is, but... So they're having difficulties as well. Lastly, I'm holding our Academy Day. We have Academy Day basically every year in our district. I hold it at Braintree Town Hall at ten o'clock on this Sunday. This is for any of our young people who are interested in attending any of the military academies. We will have representatives there from West Point, from the Naval Academy, from the Air Force Academy, from the Coast Guard, from the Merchant Marine, and from Mass Maritime. And I try to bring in a group of cadets and other young people who are at the academies now, so they can... It's a great dialogue between those kids and the students that usually come in to take part in that. And Walpole has had a rich history. I appointed a lot of kids from Walpole in my time in Congress, so you should be very, very proud of them as well, and I'm sure we'll have others from this upcoming class. At the end, I just want to say Walpole is a shining example of what's best about America. You take care of your kids, you take care of your seniors, you take care of your veterans. I mean, there's nothing better than that. And I'm enormously grateful to have the responsibility of representing you in Congress. May God bless you for taking part in Town Meeting. May God bless the town of Walpole, and may God continue to bless these United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you, Congressman. I have a preliminary motion from the Finance Committee to waive the reading of the warrant. Requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? It is a vote. I have another motion to the Finance Committee. All motions of Finance Committee be the main motion. Requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? It is a vote. Consent agenda. Our rules provide for the moderator to make use of a consent agenda comprised of articles which generate no apparent controversy and could be properly voted on as one unit without debate. The consent agenda with the article numbers and Finance Committee voted list was emailed to you this weekend. I read the articles. It's been brief description now, and if any members have an objection and wish to hold any of these articles, please let me know, and we'll be happy to hold those for you. The first article is Article Two, the Budget Adjustments. Finance Committee vote was favorable action thirteen zero zero. Select Board favorable action five zero zero. Is there a hold on Article Two? Mr. O'Leary. Article Three. Other Post-Employment Benefits. Finance Committee vote was favorable action eleven one zero. Select Board vote favorable action five zero zero. Is there a hold on Article Three? There is none. Article Four, Stabilization Funds. Finance Committee voted favorable action twelve one zero. Select Board voted favorable action five zero zero. Is there a hold on Article Four? There is none. So for Articles Three and Four, it requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed? It is a unanimous vote. Article One is regularly moved and second of the Town Hear and Act on any report or committee. To choose any committee, the Town may think proper and transact any other business that may legally come before the Town. This is an article which is on every Town Meeting warrant. It remains open during the dependency of the Town Meeting this evening, and it will close and be dissolved upon dissolution of the Town Meeting. Is there any committee that wishes to report? There being none, we'll move to Article Two, which has been held by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. O'Leary, please use the microphone, and your comments are welcomed.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. One question first. Did you say we had a quorum, and if so, how much was it?
It's a quorum of ninety-six RTM members here this evening.
Thank you. Regarding Article Two... I just wanted a clarification from someone as to exactly what we're voting on, if you would.
Sure. Mr. Barrett or Mr. Johnson? Mr. Johnson, Town Administrator. I don't think your microphone's on, Jim.
Sorry. I apologize. What you're voting on here is a few items related to the school department budget. So Walpole Public Schools took in some funds that were eventually certified for free cash through the McKinney-Vento Act, student parking fees, and Medicare money. And they also took in some additional funds here that we're raising through taxation for a total of one million, one seventy-eight, five eighteen here. Do you have a specific question related to an item? Mr. Moderator, through you.
Sure. Mr. O'Leary.
I guess we... I guess I understand now the Vento and the parking. I recall that from previous Town Meetings. The amount being raised from taxation, why is that... Why are we... What is the purpose of that money?
Mr. Johnson?
Sure. Mr. Moderator, through you. So when we set the budget, we set it in March-April timeframe. We go off of the Governor's House One budget. The state aid does not come through and be finalized generally until the end of June or beginning of July. So additional funds came in here. We anticipated those funds to come in, but we weren't sure it was going to happen. Select Board, Finance Committee, and School Committee met, discussed that matter, and said if the funds come in, we'll make sure we get it available to you. They mentioned they were about close to six hundred thousand dollars short in their FY twenty-six appropriation. They let us all know that. I called it out in the cover letter at the Spring Town Meeting. We were able to get there. School Committee is comfortable. Finance Committee is comfortable with raising those funds, and the motion has to specify through taxation.
Thank you. I'm satisfied.
You satisfied?
Yeah.
Any other questions in Article Two? This requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? It is a vote. It's a unanimous vote. Article Five. Article Five and Six deal with capital budget, non-borrowing items and borrowing articles. I'm not going to read the entire... But it's... I'll read it briefly and see if the Town will vote to raise and appropriate to transfer from available funds a sum of money as may be required to partially implement a capital improvement program to protect, improve, and/or modify the Town's capital equipment and physical infrastructure. The... This article is a petition of the Select Board. Go to the... Mr. Shea, for the Finance Committee.
Finance Committee... Finance Committee. Favorable Act. Favorable Action eleven zero zero.
Mr. Barrett, Board of... Select Board.
Select Board voted favorable action five zero zero.
Capital Budget. Mr. Forsberg.
Moderator, Capital Budget Committee voted favorable action six zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. Forsberg. Questions and comments with regard to Article Five? Yes, sir. Mr. Damish.
Damish, Precinct Seven. Just through you, Mr. Moderator, a question on the Highway Division Chapter Ninety funds. If someone could just clarify, is that our money, or does that come from the state, or where's that coming from? Sorry. It's about halfway down under Public Works. It says one point seven five million, and next to the final is one million, one hundred ninety-eight thousand.
Mr. Johnson?
So that's the state allotment that comes through the state. Some towns don't allocate it through Town Meeting. Walpole historically has done it through Town Meeting, so we bring it before the Town Meeting. That's the allotment we're set to use. We send it out to bid this winter, so it's ready to go in the spring.
Great. Just wanted a clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. For point of information to the body, I was presented with a substitute motion on this article. I spoke with a proponent of that motion, told him it was not in proper form. I advised him how to put it into proper form. I've not since received another motion, so there's no substitute motion before you. What's before you is this, the main motion. Requires a simple majority vote. Unless there's any other questions or comments with regard to Article Five. This requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? It is a unanimous vote. Article Six. See if the Town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow a sum of money required to complete implementation of a capital improvement program to protect, improve, and/or modify the Town's capital equipment and physical infrastructure and all incidental and related expenses included and related thereto. This is a petition of the Select Board. Mr. Shea, Finance Committee.
Finance Committee voted favorable action eleven zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Mr. Barrett, Select Board.
The Select Board...
The Select Board voted favorable action 5-0-0.
Mr. Forsberg, Capital Budget.
Capital Budget voted favorable action 6-0-0.
Thank you, Mr. Forsberg. Questions and comments with regard to Article Six? There being none, Article Six requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? It is a two-thirds vote. Article Seven. Article Seven is regularly moved and second of the town vote to authorize the Select Board to petition the General Court for special legislation to amend the town charter, to create a sewer and water advisory board, and approve Article Seven as printed in the warrant. This is a petition of the Select Board. I will tell the body, I do have a substitute motion, and it's from Mr. Fassinell, seconded by Mr. Hamilton, both RTM members and both also members of the Water and Sewer Commission. The motion from those gentlemen is a motion to table Article Seven. I will explain that if that were to become the main motion, Article Seven would then be tabled, and at the dissolution of this town meeting, Article Seven would be dissolved along with the town meeting. It could come back at a later date, of course. Now, my practice is, and I know each moderator does it a little differently, but my practice is to speak, have people speak to the main article. I wanted to alert you to the substitute motion. We'll talk, we'll have a discussion, and we'll have a debate on the main article, and then we'll vote on whether we want to make the substitute motion the main motion. If the substitute motion has made the main motion, that will then be voted on as a simple majority vote. In order to make, so that's it, that's all I wanted to say at that, at this point in time. So let's go to the Finance Committee on the vote of this Article, Article Seven. Mr. Shea, Finance Committee.
Finance Committee voted favorable action 12-1-1.
Thank you. Mr. Barrett, Selectmen, Select Board.
The Select Board voted favorable action 5-0-0.
Okay. My understanding, all right, does anybody wish to speak to this? Yes, Selectman and Vice Chair of the Select Board, Ally Hamilton, wants to speak to this petition.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me through this microphone?
Can you hear, hold on, can you hear her okay? No. Can you, can you put...
This one should be on as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
Turn it up a little bit, please, if you don't mind, thank you.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to introduce Article Seven and address some questions that have been raised by residents, as well as those questions discussed during the Finance Committee public hearing, so that we can have an efficient discussion as possible on this article. Article Seven proposes a change to the town charter to replace the elected Sewer and Water Commission with a Water and Sewer Advisory Board. The Advisory Board would have five members, two appointed by the Select Board, two appointed by the Finance Committee, and one appointed by the town moderator. Because this is a charter amendment, it follows a home rules process and requires a majority vote. The process for planning, for placing Article Seven in the warrant is the same as for all town meeting articles. The town administrator drafts the warrant identifying matters that may require action, including articles sponsored by boards and committees or citizen positions. The Select Board is responsible for opening and closing the warrant and sponsoring the articles, bringing them to town meeting for consideration by this body of elected officials and representatives. After the Finance Committee's initial review and comments, the Select Board made adjustments to Article Seven to clarify the appointing bodies for the proposed advisory board. Because the warrant was still in draft form, these adjustments were allowable. The Finance Committee then reviewed, finalized the warrant during public hearing, and reviewed the finalized public warrant during public hearing before this town meeting. The Advisory Board would continue to oversee the role of the current commission, reviewing operations, projects like Capital Budget Committee evaluates capital projects. It will review proposals, advise the Select Board on capital project rates, and provide recommendations. While day-to-day operations remain under the direction of the town's highly skilled professional staff who have the qualifications necessary to manage this technically complex system. The Advisory Board meetings and agendas would be posted publicly. The recommendations would be brought before the Select Board during public meetings. The Finance Committee would continue to review the budgets, and town meeting will continue to approve appropriation budgets following the same process used by all other departments. The Select Board would remain responsible, operations, maintenance, capital planning for the town's water and sewer system. This includes sewer treatment plants, water infrastructure, and all associated capital projects. The Select Board would ensure that all operations are professionally managed, financially responsible, and aligned with the long-term needs of our community. While the Advisory Board could provide guidance and recommendation, final authority for budgets, rates, capital planning would remain with the Select Board. Large projects, such as a secondary water source, whether from the MWRA or another option, would continue to be evaluated, and the final decision on these projects would be brought to town meeting for approval, just as all other capital projects that require significant abhorting. The Water and Sewer Commission was established in 1894, and the water town system was far less complex. Today's system is highly regulated, technically sophisticated, and financially significant. Updating the commission to an advisory board structure ensures oversight that meets modern demands. Many other communities have also transitioned to a similar model due to the changes required by municipal water operations, as listed in your RTM packet. If this charter change would take effect, the terms of the elected commissions will end, and those currently serving will automatically become members of the Advisory Board. This would maintain continuity, preserve institutional knowledge, and ensure the Advisory Board is comprised of terms that do not all expire at one time. An individual who's currently serving on a appointed board, such as Finance Committee, would be eligible to be appointed, such as a Finance Committee member is currently appointed to our Capital Budget Committee. This has been standard practice. Questions from residents about how water and sewer funds have also been asked, and it's important to clarify, the Select Board will not use these funds for general town operation. Water and sewer enterprise funds fall under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Forty-Four, Section Fifty-Three, One Half F. Mixing enterprise funds with general funds would violate state law, accounting standards, and Department of Revenue certification rules. These funds are self-sustaining, meaning revenue retained earnings primarily from user fees can only be used to support operations of the enterprise itself. We hope this brief summary of questions and answers helps to clarify the subject of Article Seven, and we look forward to having further discussion on this this evening.
Thank you. Questions and comments with regard to Article Seven? Mr. Abbott.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Abbott, Precinct Six, and also a member of the Sewer and Water Commission. I've done a lot of research and thought on this article, and I've decided if we're voting for it, that I would vote in favor of it. This is obviously a significant change, and it's not something that I would take lightly. But I came to this decision after considering various things. First, I spoke to a couple members of the Select Board, and basically what I was interested is finding out, how would they use this new advisory committee? And their answer was that we'd be reviewing capital requests, reviewing the rates, and projecting future rate impacts on the proposed capital spending. I then reviewed what the Sewer and Water Commission actually does as opposed to what the town charter says. And the town charter says that the commissioners have exclusive charge and control of the water department, and it says the same thing for the sewer department. But first, a bit of history. In the late 1960s, the water system had some severe supply as well as quality issues. To address these issues, the town undertook major projects. They constructed new wells, additional storage tanks, and a water treatment plant. The Sewer and Water Commission was created to oversee this work, and at the same time, the sewer system was being extended into South Walpole as well as West Walpole. Today, the reality is far different than what the town charter mentions. A typical meeting of the Sewer and Water Commission is we'll get a status report, we'll address some abatement requests. These abatement requests have been researched and proposed by the water department office staff, and these can be handled by the office staff. We also get requests for comments from the planning board on projects that are before the planning board. Frequently, our comments are that we agree with the town engineer's comments. The Sewer and Water Commission also holds rate hearings. Unfortunately, almost no one ever attends these. I think last June, we had just one member from the public. And hopefully, having these hearings by the Select Board, we may get more coverage. However, it's important to understand how the real process happens to, for generating a rate. In January, the departments make their budget requests. Then the town administrator, Jim, reviews these requests and then passes them on to the Finance Committee, who reviews and then approves the budget. The town meeting, this body right here, votes on the budget. At that point, this is where the Sewer and Water Commission comes in to set the rates, and they have to fund the amount that has been approved by the town meeting. And basically, it becomes an exercise in arithmetic. We can be able to tweak the rates a little bit, but not very much. We still have to meet the, cover the amount that the town meeting has approved to be spent. Today, the Sewer and Water Departments are managed by very experienced, certified, qualified professionals. The departments not only perform their daily operation of these, both systems, the Sewer and Water System, but they are the ones who are developing the five-year capital plan. They decide when and what maintenance will be done. They decide what projects are going to be done, when they'll be done. The only major capital project that in the past ten or fifteen years that's involved the Sewer and Water Commission is the prospect of joining the MWA water system to supplement our local supplies. And this would be something that would be carried on by the Advisory Board. There've been a couple of valid concerns that have been raised about Article Seven, and the first one is if a customer has an issue with their bill, water quality, et cetera. Today, they can bring that issue to an elected board, the elected Sewer and Water Commission. And some thoughts have been that this, if this article passes, that that opportunity would disappear. And that's not true. You'd still have the ability to go to an elected body, namely the Select Board. The other is, is that there'd be no checks and balances. This again is not true. Currently and the future, regardless of whether we vote in favor or oppose to Article Seven, no money funds from rates retained earnings can be spent without the review of the Finance Committee, and most important, approved by town meeting. The Sewer and Water Commission has never been able to spend money for anything unless it was approved by the town meeting. For these reasons, and those include that we're in the package that we got for the town meeting, I'm recommending that we vote favorably for Article Seven. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abbott. Further questions and comments with regard to Article Seven? McNamara. Before you start, I'm sorry, I have a couple points of information, if I don't mind. Mr. Abbott, if I could, just direct a question. Prior to 1960, was, did I understand you correctly, the Sewer and Water Commission was formed in 1960, is that correct?
No.
No? Okay.
There is a little confusion. In the 1896 or 1895, when we actually formed the water system, we did have an elected Water Commission.
Okay.
Around the 1925-26, that ceased to exist, and you can follow this by looking at the town reports. From that point on, the water department just functioned as a department within the Public Works Department. It was headed up by the foreman. It wasn't until around the 1960s era that we were experiencing really severe problems with water quality and also the volume of water. And we hired a firm at Caffinetti who made certain suggestions, and those items that I listed, additional storage and so forth, is what came out of it. And it was felt by the town at that point that we should have a formal commission, and that's what we had a charter change.
Okay, thanks for the, I was a little confused.
So during, in the fourth, if there ever was somebody, it might have been working for the engineer, it might work for the Board of Selectmen, it really wasn't a formal until you got to the charter change.
Okay, I was just, I was, just a further point of clarification. You were not on the 1925 Sewer and Water Commission, is that correct?
Yeah, I didn't get elected that time.
Thank you. Other point of information, there were 129 RTMs present, so more people came in from the initial number that I have. Another thing I do want to bring to your attention, I had a very lengthy conversation with one of the commissioners on this issue, Pradeep Mishra, who's been sending a number of emails to me, and he could not be present this evening, and he just sent a text, and I wanted to read this, and this is, I checked with counsel, it's at the discretion of the moderator, but he says, "Dear Jim Brady, I kindly request that following Diwali greeting be included in the fall town meeting public record. Happy Diwali, Walpole. Today we celebrate the festival of lights, the spiritual victory of light over darkness, good over evil, and knowledge over ignorance. Wishing families and neighbors who celebrate Diwali a year filled with peace and unity. Thank you for including this message in the official record to recognize the cultural and community significance of the festival in Walpole. Warmest regard, Pradeep Mishra, Commissioner and Clerk and Representative Town Meeting Member, Precinct One." So I wanted to include that into the record on behalf of Mr. Mishra. Thank you. So further, I'm sorry, Ms. McNamara, my apologies.
No need to apologize. Lucy McNamara, sixteen, Clear Pond Drive.
What precinct?
Precinct Six. Thank you for reminding me.
That's okay.
So the public hearing sort of clarified a lot of things for me, because I was very conflicted on this. I love the people that I've met at town hall and at different boards and stuff. I think I was the only person who attended the rate meeting for Sewer and Water Commission.
So you're the culprit.
I'm the culprit. So, you know, the public hearing on Thursday, October 16th, which is just last week, was wonderful. I mean, the Finance Committee was very gracious. Instead of considering Articles Eight, Nine, and Ten, and then doing a public hearing, they opened the public hearing first. And eventually, we got to talk about Article Seven. So one RTM came up and said, "Why now?" One Select Board member said, "Well, it's been part of my conversation for the last four years." Another comment was, "Other towns are doing this." Eventually, there was a comment from a Select Board member that, "We're following procedures properly, and this is legal. None of those are statements that answer why. There is one statement in a handout to me that says, 'In recent years, delays caused by quorum issues or inaction on professional recommendations have created legal, financial, and operational risks.'" That's a significant statement. At the public hearing, no one amplified what that statement is. And as I've talked to people who are residents, because I'm supposed to represent my precinct, they're affirmed, "No. The case has not been made to them as to why a switch." So I wanted to ask, if this article disappeared, does this change the trajectory of future capital projects that involve our water and sewer system or the hookup to MWRA?
To whom would you like to direct that question?
Any, all.
Okay.
The administrator, the Select Board, and the Finance.
Okay, Mr. Barrett, Select Board.
Sure. So we have talked at the Select Board level about the possibility of the MWA hookup to take a kind of a theoretical discussion and make it real. Let's use that as an example. We've talked about that at length for, boy, it seems like months, but it's probably been over a year. And so if I understand your question, I'll repeat it back to you, but would the trajectory of that or the decisions made be altered pending the outcome of Article Seven? I'm not sure, because the Select Board has never truly deliberated on it. I think people have said it's a good idea to continue to investigate it. My understanding from the Sewer and Water Commissioners is they also believe it's a reasonable thing to continue to investigate, so it hasn't... So it hasn't ever gotten past that point where we would be saying, well, as the Select Board stated, they're not interested in Sewer and Water Commissioners are, or something to that effect. We have not gotten to that place. So I couldn't definitively say one way or the other on those items.
Thank you for that. Jim?
Mr. Johnson?
Sure. From my perspective, obviously, I think I said in my opening letter here to all town meeting members, cotton of rock and hard plays on this one. I work for the Select Board under their guidance and direction, but I also serve as the agent for the Sewer and Water Commissioners. To your question specifically relating to the MWRA, in the cover letter to town meeting members, I specifically, the last two pages, I go on and talk about the MWRA, some of the complex, long drawn-out process that it's taken us to get to the point where today, which is just over about 40% designed. I anticipate, within the next one to two months, a joint meeting, regardless of the outcome of this article, will be held with the Select Board, Finance Committee, Sewer and Water Commissioners, basically for myself, staff, our consultant, Weston and Sampson, to come together and say, "Here's where we're at. Right now, our timeframe is, we are scheduled to go before the spring 2026 town meeting to consider an article to join the MWRA. Here's the pros and cons. Probably within a year or so, we'll have to allocate some funds for that." So I don't see that going off track one way or another, depending on the outcome of this article. As for the capital budget, the five-year plan's in place. That plan, for every department, seems to change. One way or another, priorities get moved, fire trucks get more expensive or are longer to build, we may move it up. Sewer water infrastructure projects may be needed, like something, a pipe might break that might need to move it up. So I think this is a moving document, a living document, and we'll continue to work off of it, just regardless of the outcome of this one.
Okay, and the Finance Committee was the last group to give an opinion.
Yeah, Mr. Barrett wanted to speak again to the session.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to add, and I don't want to repeat, because I know we want to keep going, and there's others that want to speak. I think that Mr. Abbott did a really good job of explaining, you know, what would go forward with the folks on the commission being on the Advisory Board. And so as Mr. Johnson said, right, that is what would be included in further discussions. So it's really the same folks should this pass and should the commissioners stay on the Advisory Board. And I would hope that they would, because we have a lot of institutional knowledge. I mean, Mr. Abbott has been on there for quite a few years, has a lot of knowledge about the ins and outs of the departments. Those discussions would remain the same.
Thank you. Mr. Shea, she had a question directed to you as to the Finance Committee vote.
Yeah, I think most of it's been covered already. The one thing I wanted to mention was just the need for efficient town government. You know, there have been times where I think all boards and committees could be a little more efficient, whether or not this moves forward. We just want to continue to make sure that we are being as efficient as possible at all levels.
Okay. So talking to people in my precinct, they're affirm, "No," which means that somehow, the message from this group didn't get to them. And I think they're common sense people. If the case was presented to them, they wouldn't be a "no," which put me in a conflicting position. So there was another question that came up at the public hearing, which was, "Who would be on this board?" And we all know that the current commissioners would end up on the appointed board, which was interesting to observe, the tenor of the current commission, because there seemed to be a very uneasy relationship between the Select Board and the Sewer and Water Commission as it exists currently. But I also felt it was interesting how the question of who will serve on the board was addressed. Finance Committee people immediately started talking about joint appointments, people being on more than one board, and how useful it would be to have somebody on, from the Finance Committee, on the new Advisory Board. Another person lamented that very few townspeople apply to be on in the open positions of the board. Only one person mentioned the moderator, that you take the time to talk to Walpole residents and identify people who would be great on boards. What surprised me was none of the comments, I mean, except for the comment about the moderator, talked about recruitment, which is an active process and not a passive process. And that really sort of struck me, because this is kind of important. Our aquifer is stressed, according to the meeting that I attended at the rate adjustment meeting, which means we're going to have to innovate. You can't create more water. There's no asteroid coming in from outer space bringing more water to the earth. We have to live with what we got. Same stuff in, same stuff out. So in this process, I feel like some issues are being missed, which is, there's only so much water. If we get MWRA water, it's a little less than half of what we use currently, and we're going to have to make some bigger decisions, like gray water treatment and requiring certain construction aspects when people build things. And those are actually the bigger issues that seem to be lost in this process. So as I close, I'm still conflicted, but I think that the public hearing was missing some substance, and the case for changing from a commission to an appointed board wasn't made strongly enough for the people I represent, and that's put me in a tough place. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Further questions and comments with regard to Article VII? Yes, sir.
All right, Dan Ellard, RTM, Precinct 8. So I just had a question in regards to the water department's role in the new Advisory Board. So apparently, we have a great asset with a water department with a lot of technical skill. From the Advisory Board standpoint, it mentions in the powers and duties, I'm paraphrasing a little bit, but it says, you know, "They'll advise on policy and fiscal matters, including annual budget and sewer rates, rather than technical and operational matters." So when they're advising on this, how much of the water department's expertise is taken into effect and consideration during the decision-making process? Is anybody from the water department eligible to sit on this board? And if no one from the water department sits on the Advisory Board, and there's nothing in the proposed changes about them being represented on it, just want to make sure that that consideration is taken into effect. And I guess a general question is, do we have anybody right now with the expertise in the water department who would be eligible to be on this Advisory Board?
Mr. Barrett?
Sure. Through you, Mr. Moderator. So, you know, I guess the first part of the question, you know, the folks in our water department are, you know, by and large, excellent, and they're experts in their field, and there's many certifications that are required for the work that they do. And we're very lucky to have all of them, from the DPW Director all the way through the departments. Their recommendations and their viewpoint on matters is really paramount. I mean, it's a little bit like the FinCom, Finance Committee makes the main motion at town meeting. Well, they make the main motion on these decisions. They present all of the data, they present all of the information that's needed for them, the bodies, to make those decisions. So, you know, nothing happens without their input, for sure. And we lean on them very heavily, whether it's the Select Board with Jim Johnson in the Town Administrator's office, you know, the Police Department, the Fire Department, all of those folks. Their input and their, you know, recommendations are weighed, you know, carry a lot of weight with what we do. And so I don't see that changing now. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Mr. Ellard?
Brad Hickey, Precinct 4. Sorry. One of the, that's okay. I had the wrong guy. Oh, good. One of the problems I have with this, just the way it's written, I tried to read it a bunch of times, and it's not clear to me. The Select Board appoints two members, the Finance Committee appoints two members, and the moderator appoints one member. In Section 4 of Article VII here, which is not part of the charter, it's just a description of the article, talks about the first two vacancies filled by the Select Board, the second two by the Finance Committee, and the third by the moderator. Not a math major, not my specialty, but first two, second two, third, doesn't add up, doesn't make sense. So it's not clear to me how this works operationally. Okay? The Select Board nominates the first two appointees. When those seats open, do the Select Board get to keep filling those seats? Or does the next time it comes up, if it's the Finance Committee's turn, do they get to fill that seat? It's not clear. And if it's not written in the charter and it's not clear, I don't know how we can agree to it, because we're just going to leave it to the whims of the people in charge. And that's not how the article should be written. So unless it's clearly written here, it can't work. On the larger scope...
Mr. Hickey, would you like a response to that?
Not really.
Okay.
I don't think anybody can make it clearer than it is, because it is what it is. If I wrote this, then, you know, I'd probably lose my job. But that's being what it is.
Point of order.
I didn't ask a question.
No, I agree with Mr. Hickey. It's a comment. I was the one who asked if he wanted an answer to that hypothetical question, but...
The larger point here, and Ms. McNamara touched on it from the meeting, there is no "why," right? We hear this, we hear this, the current Sewer and Water Commissioners, I don't know a single one of them, never met any of them, I don't have any relationship with any of them, there's nothing to do with them, as far as I'm concerned. What I don't understand is, if there was significant operational, legal, and other risks that have been involved, there's been no recall petitions, there's been no ethics complaints or other violations, we're just saying, you know what, we're just going to broom this whole elected board. We're going to have 65 people in this room tonight, wipe out everybody in this town's right to vote on this board, because 65 people here decided that it's more important that the Select Board gets to do this. Efficiency is what Mr. Shea, and I work with Mr. Shea, I appreciate all the work he did. It's not about efficiency, it's about consolidation. Consolidation of power and canceling of elections, that's not something I'm going to co-sign on. And it doesn't matter if it's the Sewer and Water Commissioners, or the next time they come, it's going to be the Planning Board if they don't like what they did, and the next time, it's going to be the School Committee when they don't like what they did. We have various elected boards for various reasons. If you don't like the way they're working, find better people, fight them at the ballot, fight them with a recall, you don't wipe out the ballot. I don't understand how so many people here can support that. If it was in any other aspect of your lives, you'd be shouting at the rooftops. But here in Little Ol Walpole, we want to do it this way. I just don't agree. It's a disaster.
Further questions and comments? Ms. Khatib?
Thank you. Sarah Khatib, Precinct 8. Just want to amend some comments based on Ms. Hamilton's presentation. So I appreciate that there was some explanation. I think it's all a little too little, too late, and leaving out essential items. I am a "no" on Article VII, however, I would be in favor of the substitute motion to send it back to committee. So I have been vocally against Article VII, publicly criticizing the process that the Select Board has gone through. Taking away a five-member elected board and moving it to an Advisory Board with questionable power is a significant change to the way the town operates. Really, at the heart of the issue with the process is that the Select Board has not made the public case as to why this change needs to be done. And also, the Select Board has not made the case publicly on why there is urgency. Select Board member Maffey made a few comments at the Select Board meeting about streamlining decisions. And other than that, prior to tonight, really, I haven't seen the Select Board lay out the reasons for this major change. I know that the Select Board members have been talking to people individually and giving their reasons for the change, and perhaps also explaining the urgency. But for the benefit of RTMs that don't have a personal relationship with Select Board members, and also for the Walpole community members outside of this room, the Select Board should really be open and direct about why they have proposed this change. Board members have been open about having this plan for years, and open about having discussions with each other outside of public meetings. However, once the Chair or another Select Board member wanted to pursue this change, a charter amendment there should have shared with the impacted board, which is the Sewer and Water Commissioners, and presented the idea in a public meeting. As we know, charter amendments take a long time to go through the legislature, which is how it's being proposed here. Take, for example, two recent charter amendments. I personally have a keen interest in both of them. One of them was the name change from Board of Selectmen, and the other was the town election date. So for the name change, a group of us worked together to submit a citizens petition, and that was at the 2019 Fall Annual Town Meeting. Beginning in the summer, I think it was July, we started engaging with the public to present the idea and gather support. The town eventually assisted us with the language, and town meeting did pass those two articles. It is.
Yeah, she's making a point. I'm going to let her go. You can go a little bit further, but start wrapping it up, please.
Okay. It went through the legislature, passed in July 2020. It didn't go into effect until it was signed by the Governor, and that was January 2021. That is two years and two months after the passage of town meeting. Now, the charter amendment to change the town election was brought by the Select Board. At the time, I felt it was an unwise change, and I spoke out against it. I still think it's an unwise change, and I'm still working on a better solution. Quickly of note, our neighbors in Canton have passed moving their town election to November. I'll skip over the details. But side note, if anyone wants to join me in this effort, and a couple of us that are working on it, please see me. So that article, perhaps because it was sponsored by the Select Board, it went through the legislature more quickly. It was approved by town meeting in 2023 Fall Town Meeting. It passed the Senate in November, but it wasn't signed to the by the Governor until May. So that was too late to move the election. So the election didn't, wasn't changed effectively until May this year, which is one year and seven months after the passage.
You're going to get to the point here. I think the point...
My point is...
Hold on, moderator's speaking. The point you're trying to make is you're not happy with the process that the Selectmen utilize in bringing this to the town meeting. That has been made by you. I think you've made your point. Would you have a specific question you'd like to address to the Selectmen at this point in time?
I do.
Please do.
Okay. My point is, the option to go through the legislature takes a long time. Even if this were to pass tonight, we can estimate like one year, at least, before this is implemented. So if there is urgency for this change, this is not the way to solve the problem. So I have three questions. What are the clear, number one, what are the clear and direct reasons for this change? Number two, what is the urgency? And number three, why did the Select Board take this approach to the change?
Mr. Barrett?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. So I don't want to repeat all of the three and a half minutes that Vice Chair Hamilton went through, and I don't want to read off of the, you know, four pages of frequently asked questions that are in the RTMs packet. And I won't repeat what the previous speaker over here said about everything that was discussed at FinCom. So I guess what I would say in general to that first question is that we really need folks to get engaged and to pay attention. You know, I received, and I know that a lot of other Select Board members received, a lot of outreach over this over the last few months, and it has been months since this was proposed. There's been a lot of back and forth between the Board and the Finance Committee. Finance Committee recommended changes to this article, and changes were made. And there's been a lot of back and forth with the town meeting members, RTMs. I personally have had a lot of texts and phone calls. I know other board members have as well. And that's great. It means that people are getting informed, and they want to know about, you know, this article. They want to know the information behind it, they want to know the ins and outs of it. So, you know, we're always happy to do that. I know that folks can sometimes be fond of declarative statements. You know, that kind of undermines the spirit of communication that we have. We may not all arrive on the same side of an article, but in order to find out that information, we need to have an exchange, and we need to be able to communicate. And so, you know, the experience is that's taken place here. I don't think that requires six months, I don't think it requires 12 months to have those meaningful discussions, you know, as a town with residents and with RTMs, nor is that reasonable, right? I mean, we want to operate in an efficient way, and sometimes the town is required to act more quickly than others. So I hope that answered the first question, but if you could repeat the second question?
The second question is, why is there urgency in this matter?
Excuse me, through the moderator to the, the second question is the issue of urgency.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Moderator. Yeah, the urgency is that this is something that's been, that's been talked about for quite a while. I know it was alluded to at the FinCom meeting, not just by one select board member, but by a lot of folks in town. And I think anybody that has, you know, been involved in, you know, attending water and the sewer and water commission meetings, has had abatements, or has been interested in the rate-setting process, those folks have been talking about it as well. So it certainly isn't an isolated incident, and now is the time to act. I don't think there's any particular reason now. It could have been done at Spring Town Meeting, it could have been done at the Fall Town Meeting before that. But I, I think, once we've identified something that can benefit the town, I think it's incumbent upon the select board to act as quickly as possible. And, you know, we've all sat in this room, this room, or, or over at the high school, and talked about the rate-setting process, and some of the issues that we've had with that. And so I don't think it's a newsflash to anybody that this has been a challenge. So now is as good a time as any to act on it, I believe.
Third question was the, the approach taken by the Board of Selectmen to bringing this article before the town meeting.
Sure, sure. I, I will take a second, I guess, here to repeat a little bit about what Vice Chair Hamilton said. You know, the, the process that we take for this town meeting was similar to the process that's been taken for town meetings for the past five, ten years, or however many. That doesn't necessarily mean it's bulletproof, right? It doesn't mean that that has to be the, the process that we take for the town meeting and the warrant for the next five to ten years. I think that's something that always needs to be discussed, and there can be improvements. And I think that you alluded to a couple of things, one being the election, another being the naming of the, the Board of Selectmen to, to the select board. I think those are great, great recommendations, and residents come forward with those. So certainly, I can speak for the whole select board and say that we're open to these changes. And I think it's necessary that we always think, or, or look at what we can do better from one year to the next. At the same time, you know, we've all been here, and some of us are longer serving the ladies, but we've heard, you know, we've had articles come before Town Meeting that had multiple public hearings, and people in opposition to it would come up and say, well, there weren't enough public hearings. On the other side of the coin, many of us have, you know, held public hearings or attended them when there's one person, two people, nobody. We've just heard about the rate hearings having one person this past year. You know, what function does that play? You can check the box, but it feels very performative. So, you know, to me, the, the process is what it is, and we followed it. And if we need to make changes to that, we certainly could. But the subject of this article is, is good, it's sound, it's well reasoned, it's not a surprise, really, to anybody that has been engaged in these matters over the past few months or years. And so I think it's really incumbent upon us, and, and I'd respectfully request that all of us as RTMs tonight, really focus on the subject of this, because it is good, it's timely, and I think that, at the end of the day, the town will benefit from it.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Thank you. Ms. Khatib. Further questions and comments? Ms. Mulligan.
Joanne Mulligan, Precinct Five. Through you, Mr. Moderator. I don't want to talk about the process. My question is to probably someone like Mr. Johnson or Mr. Barrett. In the Q and A packet on the actual kind of cover letter, there's a, there's a part that talks about quorum issues with this board, and risks that have come up, I'm assuming to the town, and I'd like to get some clarity as to what some of those risks, like an example or two, of what they might be.
Mr. Barrett.
Where exactly, just so we can, in the-
It's kind of like most of the way down of the bigger paragraph that starts where this proposal is intended.
Oh, question nine, why is this being proposed now?
It says, "In recent years, delays caused by quorum issues or inaction on professional recommendations have created legal, financial, and operational risks." And I'm definitely concerned about legal, any of these risks that could be happening, especially if the board is not listening to professional recommendations, whether it's from the town, or outside, you know, consultants, or whoever it may be.
Mr. Barrett.
Yes, through you, Mr. Moderator. I think that Mr. Johnson could better answer this.
Mr. Johnson.
Nuts and bolts of operations. Thank you.
So, as far as operations, there's been a couple of situations over the last five years or so, where commissioners have hired a consultant. I'll give you a specific example, the ABUMS Group in 2020. They recommended a series of policies, procedures, here's what you should do with your retained earnings, put twenty percent aside. Those were not acted upon, the, and after we put them in front of the commission, myself, super wa- water and sewer superintendent, DPW Director, Finance Team, they continued to not be acted upon. And that was a concern on, obviously, from my office. You know, we have, we're AAA bond rating town. They like to see twenty percent in retained earnings set aside. It was explained to the commissioners at the time. We brought it up a few years later, again, no action. From a legal perspective, there's been a situation when, back in 2020 or so, to 2023 or, around there, we were, with the apartments going up around town, both of the large-scale developers sued the sewer and water commission, and we actually eventually had to settle, took council's recommendation, sewer and water, and, and accepted some, some fees after they were told. I'm trying not to get too far in the rabbit hole, Joanne, but I'm giving you some specific examples where there have been some issues, you asked for those. And as far as quorum, you know, everyone, it's a volunteer board, this is a volunteer body. Quorums can be a problem, not only with sewer and water commission, but also in the summertime with the select board, people go away, also with Finance Committee at times, not recently, Mr. Moderator, but, so it's a, a problem across that we see with volunteer boards, but it's something we work through, so those are just a few.
Can I just add onto this? In Spring Town Meeting, we always, you know, are voting for the roads to get repaired. And every year, the town goes through a series of different, you know, roads that are allocated, I think, many years out, correct? What, what about the infrastructure with, like, the water pipes? Is that getting, like, done?
Through you.
There's something like that worri- worries me.
Okay. Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Moderator, through you. Yes, it, it is getting done. And one of the items you just recently voted on was six hundred thousand plus in water main infrastructure projects. Generally, the last three to five years, that's been a water borrowing article. My recommendation at this time was not to make it a water borrowing article, simply, as we've discussed a few times tonight, the MWRA and what's coming up with that. I'm very much mindful from working with our Finance Director, as to, what's our borrowing schedule? We want to stay in line with that, because we don't want to see a sudden spike. So we're trying to balance somewhat unknowns with this MWR connection. Is it going to be expensive? Yes, but we're trying to schedule it in, in there, if, if the town meeting decides to vote for it. So as far as the water infrastructure improvements and, and things that need to get done, to the thanks of our Superintendent Steve Nunery, Assistant Superintendent Scott Gusserson, DPW Director Rick Mattson, with Rick's fifty-one-plus years of experience, I'm sorry, Rick, literally.
They're really great, they are great.
I have faith in those three folks, and, and all the way down to their crews headed by the, the Foreman McCall, and the people on the water side, who actually mix the chemicals. We have qualified people there. Those types of projects, that's getting done regardless, whether we go advisory or commission. Those people are working, they're working under their license requirements, which is very, it's very hard to get that stuff, but, you know, I drink Walpole water all, every morning, so I have confidence in it.
Do too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mulligan. Ms. Barrows.
Barrows, Precinct One.
Can you put the microphone down a little so we can hear you? Thank you. Before you start, I do want to acknowledge that Chairman of the Finance Committee, Dennis Crowley, is with us, so, I didn't see you sneak in, Dennis. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is just like a logistics thing, perhaps for you or Town Council. So if the amendment is, or this article is a, is it, what's the threshold for the vote? Is it a simple majority?
No, good question. If you, there's a substitute motion before you, as I told you before. That motion would require a two-thirds vote to make it the main motion, because it's a motion to table. And if that becomes the main motion, it would require another two-thirds vote to carry that, because it's a motion to table. The effect of that would be, there'd be no, effectively no action, and it would go back for further study, I suppose, and the selectmen can do whatever they want to do at that point in time.
So that leads me to my other question. If we keep this as the main motion, and it, and it fails, is there, like, with changes in bylaws, a certain duration of time that we can't vote on it again?
No, no, there's no. So if, if, if you keep the main motion as the main motion, that's a simple majority vote. Article Seven requires a simple majority vote on, on the main motion, it just would fail.
Okay. And, but it can be brought up at-
Sure. Yeah, that's not like certain, there's certain other types of statutes-
Bylaws and things like that.
Bylaws that cannot be brought within a two, it has to be a two-year period. I could defer to Mr. Attorney Rice on that, but I can tell you with some certainty that that, this is not one of those articles.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Point of order, Mr. Hesseniger. Could you go to the mic, please, just so they can hear you?
You keep referring questions about sewer and water to the panel here. I'd appreciate if you referred to the sewer and water commissioners, or the professional staff, and the people who are in charge of the water department, who have the facts.
Well, if there are questions, excuse me, if there are questions that I think that are necessary to be, to be answered by experts, I would certainly do so. I don't think that's the case thus far. But if you have something you'd like to add, you're more than welcome to do so at this point in time.
Well, the whole recent dialogue that just took place, I, I take exception to.
That's fine. You can take your session. Any other comments?
I'd like to explain it since-
Excuse me, I'm speaking. Any other comments?
Yes, I'd like to answer the question that was just answered by the sewer and water commissioners, that of the town administration or the finance-
Please do. Go ahead.
Question about the operations and the problems with operations is really totally misrepresented. Somewhere, we asked, what is the catalyst for this change? As the gentleman mentioned here, there's an election coming up in the spring, two positions turn over, and within the next twelve cycle, you, you have four positions. If you don't like the sewer and water commissioners, you can replace them in less time, then this action will, will be effective. But to give up your voting rights is a serious mistake. The, the reasons, I haven't heard a legitimate reason yet from the panel. Obviously, I'll tell you what the catalyst is. The catalyst, first of all, this is a public utility, it's not a Department of Town Hall. Anywhere in government, state government, federal government, you have a traditional role when there's a monopoly resource run by government, there is a counter, countervailing power, which is an overseeing board like a DPU, Department of Public Utilities, or water commissioners, who argue the public's interest and the functions of those utilities. You can't let the town or the utility operate and oversee themselves, and appoint their oversight to themselves and their friends. It's, it's required you have an independent oversight body, particularly when it comes to rate setting. And this is universally known. Our forefathers knew this a hundred and thirty, twenty-five years ago, when they set this up. They essentially didn't want any co-mating of funds, they didn't want usurious rates set that preved excess revenues for other functions of government. This is why there's independence in the, in the function. Far as comments about, basically, the, the underlying thing is looking for a new water source, looking, we have a stressed basin, the town, and, and the, by the way, the commission changes every three or four years. And you're talking about ten years ago and so forth, that's not the current commission. And the commission is usually made up of wise, older people from town who have been in government for twenty, thirty, or forty years. People like Ken Fettick, and Roger Turner, and Clem Borjeen, you probably don't, you don't know some of these names, but anyway, this commission has a lot of experience in town, a lot of longevity, and we are concerned about the long-term horizon of the water, and about the oversight of experts who are interested in their function as water professionals, but are not looking at, for example, customer care. And it was a fight to try to get focus of, of these excellent staff, and we love the people, and we get along tremendously, but their focus is not customer care. We're dealing with a nineteen eighty billing system. We're trying to bill, bring it to the twenty-first century, and we get pushback. And they, to some degree, because we cooperate so much on every issue, they think that every point of policy that the commission gets involved in should go their way. Same thing with the billing. There's probably no one in this room that appreciates the billing system. So we're, we're trying to change, effective change, that is important, and do it kindly and softly through the professional staff. We're not taking over their jobs, we're not running the chemical feeder at the treatment plant, but we're looking at the overall policy as it affects the quality of, of care for the customer, the quality of the water, and the long-term security of the water system. Walpole has been known since nineteen eighty, we have a stressed basin, and that's why you have trouble watering your grass in the summer, because the EPA and the, and the DEP make us use conservation controls to protect, to some degree, that stressed basin. But the long term is that we do have to get another source. Now, Bill Abbott, even though he's in favor of this, my, was, has been, to some degree, my wingman, as well as Pat Fassonell, for over seven years, we have pursued getting an option, opportunity for this town meeting, for the MWRA. And at the time we started, and this is like 2017, this was proposed as a twenty-some-million-dollar borrowing program. Through our efforts, first of all, we convinced the MWRA to consider reducing their admissions fee of seven million dollars. They opened up fifty million gallons per day opportunity for certain communities, and we jumped in and got in the queue to be eligible. And we are not co-opting the town meeting in any sense. This was to bring options to you, but assure that this one- or two-year window of opportunity, once this is closed, there will never be another entry to the MWRA. Right now, we have a chance to do it. If we fumble and delay, we will never have it, and you'll find out the consequences ten or fifteen years from now. Now, someone in administration, or in the Board of Selectmen, had been pushing back on our efforts to get this opportunity nailed down with the MWRA, so you could have the option of hearing, hearing all about the options, hearing about this, and making a decision. I have personally pushed the Board of Selectmen and asked, the last three meetings, to have a prepared presentation by our, our consultant, Weston Sampson, to you, so you would know about what's going on, what the steps are, where we are, with the, how the costs are coming, so you wouldn't think there's some secret Area Fifty-One program out there that's being run by the sewer and water or the Board of Selectmen. Now, we're the ones on top of this, not Jim Johnson, and not the Board of Selectmen. We, and, Pat Fassonell-
Ms. Hattie, that's out of order, okay? Those kind of comments are out of order. Speak to the issue, but not the personalities. If you do it again, you'll be asked to sit down.
So the feedback is, we've been doing a marvelous job. We saved seven million dollars, we went and negotiated with Norwood to get a lower price from them to go and connect to their pipeline to the MWRA. We're working to get an economical solution to a pump station. We've got this down to less, to three million dollars or less, from twenty-seven million. We've been working on this, and we've been getting pushback, pushback. And somebody would like to have this run out, is what you call a, a decision by default. You wait till the deadline, and then you miss the opportunity. So I just, I just wanted to say that, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hesseniger. One point of information I do want to make clear, the water department in the town of Walpole is not a public utility, it's a department of the town. Other than that, I appreciate your comments very much, so, others? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Megan Ahigian, Precinct One. And like Joanne Mulligan before me, I'm trying to understand the material risks to the town that we're trying to address that create the urgency here. So, so far, I've heard there's a financial risk, maybe they have- the urgency here. So so far, I've heard there's a financial risk, maybe they haven't adopted some of the planning tactics that were recommended, legal risk, we've maybe had to settle some lawsuits. I'm wondering if there's also any kind of risk to our ability to retain our personnel based on how their interactions work with the board and some of these operational issues. Is that something that factors into this, or is that not an issue here?
Mr. Barrett?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. You know, it is, and I think I had alluded to earlier, so I won't repeat everything that was previously said. But I would just encourage folks, and I know a lot of folks have, to watch how the business is conducted with the folks from the sewer and water, and to watch those meetings and see how that moves forward. And honestly, I think it speaks for itself. I think the folks that work for the town are fantastic, and they put a lot of effort into planning for these meetings. So whenever the select board has a meeting, whenever their sewer and water has a meeting, there's a ton of planning and preparation that goes into it, because it all needs to be done a couple of days ahead, because it has to be posted, right? And we have all the open meeting law notification requirements. So, you know, it's critical that we keep these folks happy. And as I'm sure everyone's seen in the news, it's getting harder and harder to get good municipal folks, right, to get folks and to keep them. We have been exceptionally lucky here in Walpole with our department heads to be able to retain folks, and so certainly we want to continue to do that. And, you know, having, at the end of the day, the town administrator is leading all of those department heads, and the select board works with the town administrator to ensure that there's a good working environment for all those folks. And so at the end of the day, it does fall to the select board to make sure that that happens. So that is why it's a valid concern.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett.
May I ask for a little more clarification? Would that be all right?
What?
May I ask for a little, like a follow-up question?
Sure.
Has anyone resigned due to issues working with the sewer and water commission, or threatened or put any kind of remarks in writing perhaps about the working environment?
Okay. Who can address that issue? Mr. Johnson?
I need to be careful the way I answer this question.
Okay.
Really careful, because we're talking about employees' rights and, you know, personnel matters. I think I could say with generality, there's been some concerns expressed to me by employees about commission, just in general. And I don't want to violate anyone's rights.
Thank you. Further questions and comments?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Chandler, excuse me, Ms. Chandler Sullivan?
Chandler Sullivan, Precinct Four. So between Joanne Mulligan's comment and Brad Hickey, kind of sparked my questions on how it says, you know, basically, all the risks, legal, financial, and whatnot, and the recall process. So especially, not that it matters, I was an auditor, so the risk mitigation is something that I used to do for a living. What's the town's current recall process, or checks and balances, whatever you want to call it, that we have in place on those who are elected on either water and sewer, or any elected committee for that matter, who happen to have a personal interest when bringing various projects forward to the planning board, zoning board, et cetera? Like, how do we mitigate that risk when they have a personal interest? Because we do need checks and balances in place. Whether this passes or not, what is our process in place?
This Attorney Rice?
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. I think what we're talking about, if I understood the question correctly, is issues under the conflict of interest law.
Yeah.
And that's dealt with specifically under the law. Individuals do have rights to represent themselves, but with respect to conflict of interest, if they have a financial interest in a matter that's before a board or body of the town, there are very strict limits and requirements under the state ethics law and Chapter 268A, the conflict of interest law. So that's addressed very, very carefully, and anytime that that comes up, I know we work closely with the town administrator to monitor those situations and advise when a conflict of interest may arise.
Is that a current issue with the board that we're, or committee that we're discussing right now? Am I allowed to ask that?
No, I think that's a little out of order.
Yeah, I don't think we'll be discussing specific conflicts of interest.
Yeah, I mean, there's no, I want to make it clear to the body that there is, am I correct in suggesting that there's no suggestion being made here by anybody that there's a conflict of interest between the Board of Selectmen or anybody that's serving as a commissioner on the sewer and water commission? Am I correct in that? Okay, all right, good. Just wanted to make that clear. Somebody else who has not yet spoken to the issue? Mr. Hamilton?
Hamilton, Precinct Five. I came here tonight to eat humble pie. I thought I was responsible for this. I got elected in May, and while I was campaigning, no one mentioned that they were going to convert it to a appointed board. So I thought maybe I must have insulted someone, and I'm here to apologize. If I did it, I didn't mean it. And.
Bill, you're fine, don't worry.
I worked for water treatment designs and plants. I worked for sewers, and I climbed into a sewer to put devices in it so we could find the time of day when a sewer surcharged and caused bad aroma. I've got experience in this field, and since June of 1975, I've been pursuing having good, safe, clean drinking water for my family and friends. And I have a couple of ideas. I would like to buy water from the MWRA on Route One across from Gillette Stadium, because I watched them bring a water line up there, the MWRA. That would be a lot cheaper, and we could take that water from Route One in South Walpole and put it in the two tanks in South Walpole, which would save the ratepayers a lot of money. And I want to pursue a new water source. And we have one place in Walpole right now, in West Walpole, where I think it's very good for a reservoir. And other towns are budding us, need drinking water also.
I understand. Mr. Hamilton, you're a little off the subject matter of the article, but I'm giving you some leeway, because you've been such a dedicated volunteer here for the town for many years. Do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Well, I don't want to be fired.
Understood. And you know what? I didn't realize we had the Ed Norton of Walpole right before us, for crying out loud. Thank you very much, Mr. Hamilton. Mr. Gallivan?
Sure, I just wanted to start out by responding to something Mr. Hamilton said. He said that the MWRA has run water pipes up Route One to the stadium, and that is not true. And while John, well, John Hessenegger and I may disagree on many issues, I think we agree on that issue, that there's no water running to the stadium. If it did exist, it would be a cheaper way for us to get MWRA. I think the discussion tonight has been great on this topic. I think, I'm always impressed that people read their packets, that they watch meetings, that they get prepared to have a discussion. So I think it would be a shame to see a vote to refer back to committee when we're already having the discussion. We should take a vote, however it turns out is great. I think a point was mentioned again about co-mingling funds. There won't be any co-mingling of funds because of state law and because of our processes. I did want to also mention one other item that was brought up a little bit, which is sometimes a sewer and water commission doesn't have a quorum. And I believe it was their August meeting that they didn't have a quorum, so they couldn't have their meeting. And I know lots of boards and committees have trouble sometimes pulling people together. I think having an appointed committee long-term, and I'm happy to have all the current members, all the current commissioners serve as the first five on an advisory board. But if you look down the road and think about the future, there are a lot of people, and FinCom is kind of the model for this, who will never run for office. They're just not going to do it. They don't feel comfortable with it. They don't want to put themselves out there. But if you approach them the way the moderator does, or every moderator does, you can find lots of people with a lot of expertise that are willing to serve on a board. They just won't put themselves through the trauma of running for office and putting themselves out there. So I think that is one of the big advantages long-term, and I'm taking a long-term point of view of an appointed sewer and water commission as opposed to the current elected board. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gallivan. Mr. O'Neill?
Shannon.
Shannon, sorry. I know. Don't worry, Mr. O'Leary. I go back and forth. I play tennis. Go ahead, please.
Hi, Shannon McCarthy, RTM, Precinct Three. I just wanted to follow up on Mr. Hickey's comment about Section Four of the new language, and just ask town council if that language is, in fact, clear enough to pass the town charter, and if you have any concerns about the language as drafted.
Attorney Rice?
Oh, sorry. Through you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Through you.
Thank you. I'm a real stickler, I'm a real stickler up here.
In my opinion, the language is clear enough that you have, again, you have to read the various sections. Section 3A talks about the composition. Section Four deals with vacancies, and essentially talks about how the first two vacancies will be filled by the select board, second two by the finance committee. And when it talks about the third, it's essentially a third grouping, which would be the single appointee by the moderator. So again, this is a special act proposal. It would go to the legislature. Whether we would hear anything back from legislative council, from the House or the Senate, you know, that would be something that we would review. That would be subject to, you know, limited to questions of form and not substance. And in my opinion, that language is clear enough to pass muster and to properly address filling of vacancies.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Conroy?
Judy Conroy, Precinct Seven. I have two questions and a comment to the, through you, Mr. Moderator, to the Board of Selectmen. Prior to your vote to put the article on the town warrant the night the warrant was closing, did the board discuss and vote to actually create the article and take a vote to create the article?
Mr. Barrett?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Yeah, that's a great question. So the process for a town meeting is that it starts, you know, a couple of weeks, and as I'm sure you know this, Ms. Conroy, but for anybody that hasn't been in this position before, it starts a couple of weeks after the last town meeting. So in spring town meeting, by the beginning of June, the town administrator had already started to put the warrant together, just like in a couple of weeks, we'll begin planning for spring of '26. It's part of the town administrator's job to assemble the warrant and to propose draft language for the warrant articles. Sometimes in spring and fall, we'll do, or we'll have similar articles. You know, the spring, we oftentimes talk about the budget. As you see here in the fall, we talk about OPEB stabilization accounts and other capital accounts and spending. So those are almost always on there. Then at that point, the town administrator will make any other recommendations that he thinks fit for the departments, for the operations of the town. Other department heads can chime in with ideas for articles or changes that could be made to operations. The select board typically sponsors all of those articles. The planning board, the school committee, anybody can sponsor an article. A citizen's petition, where a resident can get, I believe it's 10 signatures, they can sponsor an article and bring it before. So all that gets built into the draft warrant. The default for that, kind of like a drop-down menu when you're filling out a form online, is to be sponsored by the select board. So there doesn't need to be any vote by the select board to be the sponsoring entity, kind of like FinCom is always the main motion. I've used that example twice now, but it holds here as well. The select board is the sponsoring entity. So when a warrant article is put on the warrant in draft form, the sponsor is the select board, and then we move forward to the point when the warrant is closed. All that simply means is that no further articles can be added to the warrant, and that's typically because FinCom is going to start, you know, deliberations and discussions, and we don't want new articles to be, you know, bombing into the middle of those discussions. That's kind of a practical matter. You know, legally, the select board could reopen the warrant, add an article, and then close the warrant again. That hasn't happened in the seven years I've been doing this, but from a legal standpoint, that could happen. So then we have the draft warrant, you know, the FinCom begins their deliberations. In this particular case, you know, I think I would hold this up as a case study of an excellent process, because FinCom deliberated on this Article VII. They thought that there were some improvements that could be made in the language. They made those recommendations, you know, in their public session. When it came to the select board's turn to review this article in public session, we agreed with that, and we revised the language to reflect the FinCom's recommendations. So we're moving along through that process. You know, the draft warrant is being discussed. No votes have been taken. All that discussion has to take place in public session, as you say. And then at some point, the warrant needs to be finalized. That's different from closed. That means that no further changes can take place. And that's a practical matter as well, because of this package that we've all voted recently that every resident should be sent a copy of, has to go to the printer. So at that point, the language cannot be changed until obviously we get here tonight and through parliamentary procedures and working with the moderator. That's the whole process. So I hope that answers your question, but if I need to talk about any one part of that, please let me know, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Ms. Conroy?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. So the answer was no. You didn't take a vote to talk about it and put it on the warrant. That's what I got through that.
Yeah.
It's your process.
Mr. Barrett?
Okay.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. So in order for a draft article to be placed on the warrant, the select board does not have to vote on it. Our vote is 5-0-0 on this, and that was made in public session.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Ms. Conroy?
My second question. The booklet went to printer, and the finance committee vote was 6-2-3. Finance committee, I understand, had a motion to table the article at their public hearing, which was, did not pass 6 to 8. The final vote was 12-1-1. Is there anyone here in the finance committee that was one of the two, or the three, or the eight that felt a little bit uncomfortable moving forward, but then caved and turned it to 12-1-1? That's real easy. We never hear a minority opinion.
That question is a little out of order, I think.
Well, I don't think so, Mr. Moderator. We never hear a minority opinion, because there never is one. So is there anyone here from the FinCom, through you, Mr. Moderator, that could speak to the sudden turnaround?
Is there anyone here from the, on the finance committee that wishes to speak to the question posed by Mrs. Conroy? Mr. Ardean?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In reference to Judy's question, I was one of the members, there were three members that abstained. There were, I believe, the first vote were, it was a 6-2-3 vote, I believe in September. It was the first time our committee was hearing this. I abstained, because I thought there should have been more dialogue during the time before our public hearing. Between that period, there was public dialogue, there was a lot of emails, people talking back and forth, and on our public hearing, there was a lot of discussion. I chose the way Roberts ruled his order, you had to be in the majority to ask for reconsideration. So one of the six members of the committee that voted yes voted for reconsideration, and it passed. I don't know if it passed unanimously, 12-1-1. It passed in 12-1-1 for reconsideration. Three of the members that abstained switched their votes. I can only speak to myself. I just, the education during that process from September into October just solidified the information that I had to make it a yes vote. And I take Judy, you know, we've been friends, but I do take exception that we caved.
Thank you, Mr.?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ardean. Further question, Mrs. Conroy?
Just a comment. Without a local newspaper and very limited social media, the residents of Walpole as a whole have no substantial information regarding this charter change. A charter change is a big deal, as Ms. T mentioned. It takes some time. It takes some massaging of words, and it takes some education to make people feel comfortable. Tonight's discussion, in my opinion, has just opened the door. I think there needs to be much more discussion, much more dialogue between residents, whether it be a mass mailing to let people know, hey, we're going to do it, we want to do a charter change. They can read it, they can toss it in the junk mail. But as the article is presented tonight, I would oppose it, but I would support the substitute motion, so that it come before the board to motion to table to further study.
Thank you, Mrs. Conroy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Conroy. Mr. Fassonell, do you wish to speak? Mr. Fassonell? Well, I'm trying to make Mr. O'Leary happy by going double on that side, so. I did it once on this side, so we'll go over that side. You happy, Mr. O'Leary? Good man. All right. Mr. Fassonell, please.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Moderator.
Good evening.
And I'd just like to get back to the substitute motion--
Yes.
--for a second. I mean, it's, I almost thought we were on something else. Okay. I'm gonna give you a little teeny bit of background first. On August 22nd, I received an email from the town administrator telling me that the town meeting--
Excuse me, Mr. Fasenello. Point of order, Mr. Ardine? Well, Mr. Ardine, I said in the beginning that my practice in former, as a prior moderator, was to allow an open discussion. I think to do it otherwise is very difficult, to be honest with you. And I spoke with Council before the meeting, and he advised that that was acceptable. So, it's really the moderator's prerogative. I think it's very hard to, so your point of order is out of order, but it's very hard to have a discussion of this nature without letting people know there is a substitute motion, number one. Number two, that that might become the main motion. But that way, we can get both sides of the discussion out at once instead of going, try to bifurcate that, it's gonna be very difficult. Thank you, Mr. Ardine. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Fasenello, please.
Yes, oh, Mr. Moderator. I received an email from the town administrator telling me that the town meeting warrant was closed yesterday. All right. And that he wanted to advise me that an article sponsored by the Select Board is going to be considered this fall. This article proposed to amend the town charter by eliminating an elected Sewer and Water Commission and replace it with a Select Board-appointed committee. This article became Article 7. Soon after receiving this shocking email, I thought it was a joke, and I started asking around if it was real. I even notified my precinct, three RTM members by email about this situation. Really didn't believe it, that my vote was gonna be, oh, the people's vote was gonna be abolished. The commission then began to stop Article 7. Okay. The Attorney General was contacted by the commission with complaints and concerns about the process that would cause this article to be implemented, and the commission is currently awaiting any information.
Okay. Mr. Fasenello, hold on. You're outside the scope of this discussion.
Well, this is the end of it. This is why we're having--
Well, I just wanna make a point that I'm very much aware of the contact with the Attorney General. I've read all those emails prior to this meeting--
Okay.
But that's not relevant to this. This article, no, you just finish. This article is properly before this body.
This is why we haven't heard from the Attorney General.
Well, my point is, if you have a complaint with the Attorney General's office pending, that's something that the Attorney General's office is gonna handle, but that's not within the purview of this article.
And that's why this meeting should be tabled.
Well, you have a motion--
This article should be tabled because we're awaiting the information.
You, sir, have a motion before the moderator, and we're gonna put that to a vote. In fact, I think that we've had a lot of discussion on this, and we have three more articles to handle. Unless there's anything new that someone wants to add, I think it's time to put this to a vote. However, Mr. Wright has a point he wants to make.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you--
Your microphone's not on, so--
Yeah, that's on. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the point that's being made. The Attorney General does not determine the content of a town meeting warrant. The warrant is submitted pursuant to Chapter 39, Section 10. The warrant is presented under the hands of the Select Board. The Attorney General's role after passage of bylaws is to review bylaws for consistency with state law. With respect to a special act, a special act would be submitted to the state legislature, both houses, for review and consideration, whether the House Counsel or Senate Counsel would take further action, request other opinions. But as to the composition of a town meeting warrant, the Attorney General does not have a role in the composition of that warrant, does not have a role in determining articles being placed on the warrant, and does not have a role in removing articles from a warrant. So, a request to the Attorney General to remove an article or to have an article passed over would not be appropriate. And I've had that discussion with respect to these very requests because I am aware that multiple numerous requests went to the Attorney General's office, and the Attorney General's office has reviewed those, has acknowledged receipt, but has not acted upon them because the Attorney General does not have a role with respect to that question. Mr. Moderator.
Thank you.
What I'm trying to say is that there's pieces that are left undone here, okay? And to table this would be a much better thing than going forth until we know exactly what's gonna happen.
Okay.
By tabling it, this can come back anytime, as you said. And why are we rushing to judgment here? That's the thing. And I think it's wise for everybody to take a step back and, you know, sort of think about this and table this for the time being.
Thank you, Mr. Fasenello. Thank you. Mr. O'Neill? I'm sorry, I moved the question. Move the question requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of moving the question, please say aye. Opposed? It is a vote.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator.
Point of order.
I'm a little confused on whether this article is gonna be tabled or is gonna be referred back to committee.
I'm gonna deal with that now, Mr. Forsberg.
Okay, because I could not table a vote in the Spring Town Meeting of '24 regarding the MWRA article that we sponsored, and I tried to table that, and Town Council told me that I couldn't. It had to be referred back to committee. So, we've been talking about referring to committee or tabling the vote.
Well, in this particular--
I'd like to know the difference, if I could explain the difference and then what we're actually voting on.
Sure. Okay. Yeah, I had a conversation with Mr. Fasenello and Mr. Hassanegger and Mr. Hamilton prior to this, got to this motion, and I told them that this is a, the proper motion is to move to table this, if they don't, if that's what they're looking to do. There's no committee to which we can refer this back to, and I don't envision myself creating a committee to deal with this issue as a town meeting member, unless county meeting members wanna be on a committee for this thing, but I don't see that happening. So, the proper motion, in my opinion, I did check with Council on this, is to move to table it. I'm not sure of the prior moderator's rulings, Ed. I don't know how we did it. There's a difference between, there's a difference between tabling an article and tabling a vote. There's two separate issues there. So, if I understood you correctly. So, what's before the body right now is whether or not you wish to make the motion to table Article 7, the main motion. The motion to table Article 7 requires a two-thirds vote. Point of order, sir. You need seven other people to rise for that. I think we can do this by voice first. Let's try it. But, all right, are there, all right, hold on. Are there seven RTMs that want a standing vote on this rather than a voice vote? One, two, three, four, yeah, there's seven. Okay. We'll have a standing vote on this then. All those in favor of tabling this motion-- Excuse me? Oh, to move the question, yeah. Yeah, sorry. Okay. To move, say again, what's your question again? We just voted that. You know, I already voted. We just voted that. We voted to move the question. It was a point, hold on. It was a point of order by this gentleman to move the question. We had a vote on that, and I ruled on that, and it was two, it was a two-thirds vote to move the question. It was clearly, no doubt in my mind, that it was a two-thirds vote, and I'm not going back to that. I decided that. Okay? So, that's, your point of order is out of order. Now, what, point of order? Correct. Correct. Yeah. We're now voting is whether or not you wish to make the substitute motion, which is a motion to move, to table the Article 7. That's the substitute motion. It's a very simple motion. We're gonna, whether you wanna make that substitute motion the main motion. Because it's a move, usually that's a majority vote, but because this is a move to table Article 7, it requires a two-thirds vote. So, we'll do it by a voice vote first. All those in favor of moving to table, of making the substitute motion the main motion, please say aye. Those opposed? Okay, it is not a vote. Therefore, what's before you, it's not a two-thirds vote. What's before you now is whether or not the main motion is going to be yes or no. It's, this is, the main motion is going, it's been quite some time since we got to it, but the main motion is regularly moved and seconded at the town vote to authorize the Select Board to petition the General Court for special legislation to amend the town charter to create a sewer and water advisory board and approve Article 7 as printed in the warrant. This requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? It's not a vote. You challenging the vote?
Yep.
No. Mr. Hamilton, the vote, the sewer commissioners, you asked to table this, which did not pass, but then we just voted the main motion, and it didn't pass. So, why would you wanna challenge the vote? No. I said that this vote was just taken was not a majority, there was not a majority, in my opinion. Do you wanna challenge that?
My second apology.
Yeah. You're a good man. Okay. All right. Point of order?
Yes, I'd like to request a standing vote.
Okay, I need seven people to request a standing vote. There's seven people that wanna request a stand, the vote is being, my call of the vote is being challenged by seven RTM members.
Yes.
Therefore, we're going to have a standing vote.
But I would say, I would rather see it substituted to a private vote.
That's not what's before the, that's not what's before right now.
Well, it is.
What's before, what's before the moderator right now is whether or not this is gonna be a standing vote. Seven RTMs haven't risen to request the same. There will be a standing vote.
Can I ask you a point of information?
Yes, sir.
After this vote is done, the standing vote, can I then ask for a private vote?
It's not necessary.
Well, I think it might be.
Um--
And how many--
No, the vote will be complete by then. We don't have to take another vote after this.
How many people would it take to get a private vote?
Well, hold on, hold on. I would suggest to you, Mr. Fasenello, that the people in this party are elected by the townspeople of Walpole, and I think the townspeople of Walpole wanna see who, how they voted. Now, if you wanna have a private vote or a secret ballot, that's what you're looking for--
That's up to the town meeting.
--the townspeople will not, that would require us to pass our ballots to everybody here, and that no one would know how you voted.
That's correct.
But that's, it's gonna be a little counterintuitive because we're gonna, we're gonna take a standing vote, and people are gonna know how you voted.
Mr. Moderator, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Rice.
I would just point out, in the town's own bylaws, with respect to a secret ballot, the bylaw specifically states, "A secret ballot vote shall be conducted in the following cases. The moderator shall conduct a secret ballot if, prior to taking any vote, a motion is made from the floor and seconded by no less than 20 RTM members. Such a motion requires a two-thirds vote for adoption." At this point, you've already taken a voice vote. That's been challenged by seven voters, so that would bring it forward to a standing or counted vote--
Agreed.
--and not a secret ballot.
So, I think, Mr. Fasenello, you are, by the rules of this town meeting, your request is precluded by the rules.
Yes, but you know that I asked you that before we voted.
Certainly, and I totally respect that. However, unbeknownst to me, Mr. O'Neill rose and asked for a standing vote before I had an opportunity, because I already said the vote, there was no vote. So, I can't control that. You're the body. I'm simply moderating under the rules that you set forth, so unfortunately, you are precluded from getting a private or silent or secret ballot. I can't, I can't order that.
But, uh, excuse me. By the record, I just object to that, okay?
Sorry?
I object.
Okay. Understood. All right, so we're gonna have a standing vote, and point of order, sir? Hold on. Well, you guys are really present at tonight, aren't you?
Mr. Moderator?
I don't think you can, Harry, I don't think it's possible. I think for the same reason I just--
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, it's the same rule.
For the exact same reasons I told Mr. Fasenello, it's precluded. The roll call would be necessary if we can't come to a, if we can't ascertain whether or not the standing vote is valid or not. So, I don't think we'll have a problem. So, what we're gonna do now is, if the tellers that have, I've asked to be tellers this evening, if they would rise, please, and would the tellers, please, give me your vote? The clerk will take the vote. All those in, this is for the tellers. This is only for the tellers, okay? Those tellers, what's before you is the main motion, whether to make it, oh, sorry. It's a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Tellers? One?
Put up your cards.
Put up your cards, please. One in favor, two in favor. Okay? All those opposed? Four. Oh, you're not a teller, sir. You're not a teller. You might be next time. Be careful what you wish for. Okay. So, the tellers will get in position. One teller will start on this end, one on the other end, okay? And Gary, Mark, why don't you come on this side? Mark? And Judy, you come, you go on that side? All right. So, all those in favor-- Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we'll get their vote. We'll get their vote. The clerk will take their vote once they make it. All right. This is, the vote is for Article 7. All those in favor, please rise and remain standing. You gentlemen, anybody on the stage voting? You're in favor. Barrett's in favor. Here he is, yeah. Mr. Shea, are you voting? You or no? Tellers are to confer with one another to confirm that they have the correct numbers. Mark and Judy, are you, do you have the same numbers? You do? Joanne, same numbers? Okay. Well, I'm gonna start with my left, over here on the left, please. What's the yeas? How many? Four yeas? The nays? Oh, I haven't got to the nays yet. Four yeas, okay. Center, how many yeas? Thank you. Right? How many yeas? Twenty-seven on the right. And I'm sure there are those out there writing these numbers down. I invite you to do so. Tellers, are you, okay? What's the no vote? Fourteen no on the left. Center? Thirty-five. Right? Eleven. Please sit. I don't think this has ever happened before. It's not-- It's not a vote, the, the, the voice vote that I called is not being a vote, is conferred. A total of, hold on, hundred and thirty members voting, sixty-five in favor, sixty-five against. Never saw that before. So, it doesn't vote. Article eight. What? Not a vote? Yeah. It is not a vote, it did not, the Articles, Article VII did not pass, it did not receive affirmative action. Okay? And I wanna commend the body for a very well-done discussion, and I think it was admirable. Article eight, we move now to the ever-exciting zoning bylaws. Please don't leave, I see a bunch of people starting to leave, come on. Oh, yeah, I'm going to the bathroom, sure. Heard that one before. Okay, zoning bylaws, Article eight, I would like to read the entire bylaw, if you don't Little levity, it is regularly moved and seconded at the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws and approve Article eight as printed in the warrant. This is a petition of the Select Board, Finance Committee, Mr. Crowley.
Finance Committee voted favorable action thirteen zero zero.
Thank you. Select Board, Mr. Barrett.
Select Board voted favorable action five zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Planning Board, Mr. O'Leary.
Planning Board voted favorable action three zero zero.
Thank you. Does anybody wish to speak to this article? Mr. O'Leary has, has a few comments, is a member of the Planning Board and also is an RTM member.
I am also a member of the Planning Rewrite Committee. Article eight basically has to do with modifying or adjusting current Section Six of the zoning bylaws, which has to do with dimensional regulations. The major, most of our corrections have been trying to make our bylaws stay in line with the state bylaws, so it's, in a lot of cases, rather than referencing a particular wording, we reference back directly to what the state says is the bylaw. In Article eight, we didn't change much in our wording. One of the dimensional regulations we adjusted, if I can find it. In our dimensional regulations table, we did make an adjustment in the highway business In the height of the maximum height of the building, we've set it at fifty-five feet, but we've added the restriction to be not more than five stories. And in the business district, the height is limited to forty, but not more than three Beyond that, we took some items- Yeah, I just said that one. Oh, sorry. Uh, no, it's listed as business. Oh, you're right. I, I stand corrected, that central business district, not business. Within this section, we also tried to clarify how the setbacks are worded and determined, especially on corner lots, where you have a street on your front and on your side, to clarify what your setbacks need to be, and clarifying the corner clearance for, so that people can see where, what's coming as they come out onto the road. We also moved the buffer zone section from Article, current Article Five into this Article Six, because we felt it was more in tune with dimensional regulations than in use regulations, which is Article Five. And we also, referencing the number of buildings per lot, we moved that. We're moving the number of buildings per lot out of Sec., Articles, uh, Section Six and into Section Five, where it's more of a use question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Questions and comments with regard to Article eight? There being none, this requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? It is a unanimous vote. Article nine. It is regularly moved and seconded at the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws and approve Article nine as printed in the warrant. Finance Committee Chairperson, Mr. Crowley.
Finance Committee voted favorable action thirteen zero zero.
Thank you. Mr. Barrett, what is, Selectman?
Favorable action five zero zero, Select Board.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Mr. O'Leary, Planning Board.
Planning Board voted three zero zero, favorable action.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Do you wish to speak to this article?
Article nine relates to our current Sections Eight of the zoning bylaws, which has to do with parking regulations. Most of the adjustments were just clarifying wording, there weren't no major changes.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Questions and comments with regard to Article nine? There being none, this requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? It is a unanimous vote. Article ten. Article ten is regularly moved and seconded at the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws and approve Article ten as printed in the warrant. Fincom.
Finance Committee voted favorable action thirteen zero zero.
Select Board.
Select Board voted favorable action five zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Planning Board, Mr. O'Leary.
Planning Board voted favorable action three zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Would you like to speak to this article?
Article ten relates to Section Nine of our current bylaws, has to do with non-conforming situations and uses. Also applied in the past, referenced non-conforming uses. The difference between the two is a non-conforming use is one that was allowed even though it was against current bylaws, whereas a non-conforming use met the bylaws that were in existence at the time it was created, but no longer meet the current bylaws.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Article ten, questions and comments? There being none, this requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is a unanimous vote. Entertaining, unless there's any questions or comments? Motion to, motion to dissolve, Mr. Buckley? Second, Mr. Ardean? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? It is a vote. Thank you very much, everybody.